The next and final item from me is a presentation that's responsive to the board's request made at our February 13 meeting related to proposals to address rebalancing enrollment between Godwin and Freeman High Schools and future growth and planned developments impacting Henrico and Highland Springs High School. And so I believe we've got a hard copy of some information coming to you that's also in Board docs, and we'll go ahead and begin that presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today I will be sharing a response to the Board's directive to provide information about potential boundary adjustments at the high school level in two specific cases.
Might I have you pause for a moment and make sure the mic's up so we can hear you well? Thank you.
Apologies. As you'll recall, school capacity was previously presented to the Board during the capital improvement plan process back in October and November. At that time, staff did not bring forward any recommendations for redistricting, though discussion points from various Board members did center around boundary adjustments. At the February 13 meeting, a directive was issued to Dr. Cashwell and HCPS staff to review the boundary lines between Freeman and Godwin and Henrico and Highland Springs High Schools and prepare possible adjustment options for your consideration. Today, we will share those options, including a potential community input process and student transition considerations. First, let's look back at the capacity information shared in the fall and the trends we've seen thus far in the current school year. This map shows the preliminary functional capacity percentages at the high school level after ACE Center programming is accounted for, as was shared in the fall during the CIP process. These figures have since been updated as they were finalized in November. As a reminder, functional capacity percentages are calculated using the fall enrollment counts that are reported to the Virginia Department of Education every November and the optimal seat count for that campus based on VDOE's formula. The ACE Center program affects the number of students physically attending their zone schools on certain days. Once ACE is accounted for, the functional capacity percentages across all nine high schools decreases. Those percentages are what is shown on this map. The preliminary figures we shared in the fall saw Freeman as the only high school over 100% functional capacity after ACE is accounted for. Due to the impacts of the ACE program and the fact that schools are constructed to operate at 100% functional capacity, staff did not recommend any boundary adjustments when the CIP plan was discussed this fall. We did commit to continuing to monitor class size and programmatic additions, such as adding a new specialty center at Henrico High School in school year 26-27 and new ACE seats, to continue to positively impact high school capacity. To provide the most relevant information today, staff compared the fall student membership previously presented to the Board in the fall to the January 30 membership counts. This map shows the overall functional capacity as of January 30 after ACE programming has been taken into account. As you can see, the overall functional capacity has not changed drastically since the fall. However, from the preliminary figures shown during the CIP process, Tucker has increased in total enrollment since this information was presented in October, leading to it being at or over 100% functional capacity even after ACE programming is accounted for. Tucker is above that percentage point only on day ones. Both Tucker and Freeman are operating at or below 101.5% functional capacity on both day one and day two as of January 2025. Now that we've looked at updated functional capacity at each high school, I'll share information related to the Board's directive for potential boundary adjustments for four high schools: Freeman, Godwin, Henrico, and Highland Springs. To arrive at the presented options, staff considered several factors. The functional capacity of the schools, historic enrollment trends, and the projected enrollment through the use of grade progression ratios were utilized as the foundation for the requested options. We also looked at feeder patterns and programmatic impacts through specialty centers and ACE, along with transportation logistics and residential development influences. Any of these variables separately or together can impact the long-term viability of any adjustments made to school attendance boundaries. And as requested by the Board, staff considered how many adjustments would minimize transition impacts for students and options for gathering community input. Now we will share those options for your consideration. We will begin with the requested option for Henrico and Highland Springs. This boundary adjustment review is related to a planned residential development located on the former Glenwood Golf Club. This residential development is currently zoned for student attendance boundaries to be split between both Henrico and Highland Springs. Highland Springs High has fluctuated between 90 and 100% functional capacity in recent years, and there are also other residential developments proposed or planned within its zone. Henrico High has had a lower functional capacity percentage during this same timeframe. As requested by the Board, staff reviewed a potential boundary adjustment for the entire residential development at the old golf course to be part of the Henrico High attendance zone, removing that current split. Zooming into that requested proposed area of adjustment, the fairways development split becomes more clear. The area in light blue is the original parcel of Glenwood Golf Club that is being subdivided for up to 291 single-family detached residences. This map also shows that there is an existing neighborhood behind the redevelopment, which does have current HCPS students living there. Due to the location of the fairways development, in order to adjust the boundary lines for those newly constructed residences to be zoned for Henrico, this neighborhood will also need to be included in the boundary adjustment. There is also the consideration for pupil transportation. The lots found west of Gordon's Lane were included in this recommendation due to transportation logistics. Their inclusion makes the bus line transfer from Highland Springs to Henrico logistically Staff utilized the finalized fall membership counts to understand the number of middle and high schoolers currently living in the requested recommended area of adjustment, or RAA, to better inform the transition options and enrollment projection impacts these changes would have. For our current school year, there are 130 middle and high school students living in the recommended area of adjustment, with an approximate cohort size of 20 students. In addition to that, it is estimated that the fairways development will yield 63 high school students once it reaches development buildout, estimated to be at the end of 2026 or the beginning of 2027. With this information, staff then reviewed capacity and began making projections for how this boundary adjustment would impact Henrico and Highland Springs over the course of the next four years. Currently, Henrico is at 64.5% functional capacity and Highland Springs is at 90.7%. The new Henrico High Specialty Center was also taken into account, as that center is opening in school year 2026-27. Staff estimated that this will increase Henrico's enrollment by 40 seats per year for four years as the program grows and allows for each grade level to participate, while simultaneously taking into account students that are already zoned for Henrico participating in the center. Using this information, staff calculated that from school year 2026-27 to school year 2028-29, Henrico will increase in capacity by 4.3% annually for a total of 12.9%, and Highland Springs would decrease in capacity by 1.1% annually for a total of 3.3%. This leaves Henrico High to be at a projected 77.4% and Highland Springs at a projected 87.4 by school year 2029-30, prior to ACE programming impacts. These are projections, however, and other factors can influence these figures. With all this considered, staff proposed implementation options for your consideration of a school year 2026-27 start date in order to account for when the fairways development will be completed, and grandfathering for current Highland Springs High School students should be considered by the Board for implementation through school year 2028-29. Moving on to the Freeman-Godwin request, this boundary adjustment option is proposed to address the functional capacity percentage at Freeman High, as the concern was raised by one Board member. Freeman High has been at or over 100% functional capacity since school year 2018-2019. Godwin High has been on a trend of decreasing enrollment since school year 2021-22. While Godwin was in the mid-90s range prior to 2020, since then it has experienced a slight decrease in enrollment of about 1% to 2.5% each year. The school board requested staff present a boundary adjustment recommendation to balance the enrollment between these two schools. Due to the locations of these high schools and the elementary schools that feed into them, elementary feeder patterns were reviewed and used as the foundation for this potential recommendation. Staff chose this route in order to maintain cohorts as much as possible. This map breaks the requested recommended area of adjustment into four sections labeled with the zoned elementary school. Two of these sections are found in Jackson Davis's zone, one for Pemberton and one for Pinchback. This is to assist with calculation methods for this potential recommendation and allow for other potential scenarios to be reviewed based on community input. While sections one and two are both in Jackson Davis's boundary, staff are using Pemberton Road as the divider line, as that is the minor arterial roadway through this area. Section three is composed entirely of the portion of Pemberton's attendance zone currently zoned for Freeman, and section four is comprised of a portion of Pinchback's zone utilizing Gaskins Road as a hard boundary line. This proposed area of adjustment hearkens back to the Freeman-Godwin boundary lines prior to the 2010 division-wide redistricting. For our current school year, there are 310 middle and high school students living within the recommended areas of adjustment, with an approximate cohort size of 40 students. Staff reviewed how these scenarios would impact the feeder patterns. Elementary to middle school feeder patterns would not change, and some of the middle to high school feeder patterns would change. Currently, Davis feeds into Tucker and Freeman. Under this option, all the Davis students that are currently zoned for Freeman would move entirely into feeding into Godwin. Additionally, under this scenario, Pemberton would feed completely into Godwin instead of being split between both Godwin and Freeman. And finally, Pinchback would continue to feed into both Godwin and Freeman, but the proposal shifts a small increase in the percentage of Pinchback students going to Godwin. All of these elementary schools currently feed into Kuyakusin, which already feeds into Godwin as one of its three feeder schools. Thus, these cohorts would continue to traverse through the school system together with a similar cohesion as seen with the current boundaries. School year 2024-25 had Freeman at 104.5% functional capacity and Godwin at 86.5% functional capacity. Using a similar calculation method as the Henrico-Hailand Springs recommendation, it was found that Freeman would decrease by an estimated 2.2% annually and Godwin would increase by 2.4% annually from school year 2026-27 to school year 2028-29 from these potential changes. This would place Freeman at 97.9% and Godwin at 93.7% functional capacity in school year 2029-30, prior to any ACE programming impacts being accounted for. Though, once more, these are projections and can be influenced by multiple other factors. With all this considered, staff proposed an implementation options for your consideration of a school year 2026-27 start date, and the Board may also wish to implement a grandfathering program for students already attending Freeman High School through school year 2028-29. Additionally, the Board may elect to provide students in the RAA the option to attend Godwin in school year 2025-26 ahead of the implementation date. At the Board's directive to minimize impacts on students, staff, we have prepared transition options for your consideration. These options include a grandfathering period for students that are currently or would be attending the previously zoned high schools at the time of implementation for the potential boundary changes. From school year 2026-27 to school year 2028-29, students that began at Freeman and Highland Springs would be allowed to graduate with their cohorts from those schools, while all incoming ninth graders in the potential recommended areas of adjustment would transition to their newly zoned schools. Another option is an opt-in program for incoming ninth graders during the year or years leading up to implementation of the potential boundary adjustments, where they are welcome to enroll in the newly zoned school before the boundary adjustments are implemented. HCPS staff would work with these students to enroll them at the newly zoned high school and assist in scheduling classes. Lastly, pupil transportation options were considered for these boundary adjustments. Previously, HCPS has offered bus transportation to either school for students in similarly impacted neighborhoods. Using this option, students grandfathered into their previously zoned school would still have a bus route available to them for the three years grandfathering would be in effect, as well as all the newly zoned ninth graders. An alternative option would be to have students who are grandfathered into their current school use the hub system that is already in place. Given the Board's requested timeline and the isolated nature of the two boundary adjustment scenarios, we have proposed some community input options that prioritize those families impacted. If the Board opts to move forward with the proposed boundary adjustments, options for input include hosting in-person meetings in March, leveraging online surveys, and creating a dedicated email inbox for comments, along with the traditional public comment options at scheduled Board meetings. Again, this information and boundary adjustment options have been provided at the Board's request per the February 13 directive. Understanding boundary adjustments are the purview specifically of the school board, staff stands ready to provide the Board follow-up information related to options shared this afternoon and/or support the work of the Board if you continue the conversation about making boundary adjustments. This concludes my presentation, and I will be glad to take any questions you have at this time.
Thank you so much. I know you have worked tirelessly on this, looking street by street and at all the matriculation patterns and all of the options and everything real estate trends and that sort of thing. There are a lot of layers that go into this, other than just drawing lines on a map. And so we recognize that. You are an expert at what you do for our schools, understanding communities and all the layers you worked out, but also understanding how every single room in every single school is being utilized. I don't know how you do it, but you know all the things. And so we really appreciate the time that you have taken on this to really look at all the options and the thoughtful way that you brought it to us, outlining it, looking at how it is a launching point for a discussion between the Board and the community. So before we get into all the nuts and bolts, I just want to thank you for your work on this. I know it's hard work, I know, but you are, you know so much, and so we appreciate your work. Thank you. I'm going to start to my right again, this time with Ms. Consella, please.
Thank you, Chair Shay. As a Board member who neither of the districts are mine that were in the presentation for consideration, I will likely have maybe some questions and comments, but I look forward to hearing what Chair Shay has to say, as well as Ms. Atkins and Mr. Young, since their schools would be impacted in the other scenario. I will start out by saying I appreciate the data through today, because we certainly see changes, which highlight the need for me to speak to Tucker. Tucker is now, in day one, over 100%, and again, I'll defer to Mr. Irving, but having watched Tucker for years and also watching Tucker with three programs in it and watching the growth in those programs over time, both before I was on the Board and since my time on the Board, I'd like to learn more about that. I was interested to see the projections for Freeman are expected to decrease by, what, 2.2% a year?
Yes.
With this proposal.
Right, with the, with this proposal, okay. But with grandfathering, net changes initially are expected to be what?
It would be that 2.2. We took the grandfathering into consideration when we calculated those percentages. So it would increase once the grandfathering is finished, but only slightly at that point.
So the last, before comprehensive redistricting was paused due to the pandemic and we just did pocket adjustments. The last one I recall being involved in as a parent was the 2017 seven-school middle school redistricting, right, when we opened Wilder, the gifted center at Wilder Middle School. Did we offer opt-ins and outs, if you will? A grandfathering is essentially an opt-out to let you continue. Did we offer that choice to the public at that time?
That is something I will need to look into. I studied the 2010 division-wide redistricting versus the pocket middle school redistricting.
If we did not previously offer that option, I just raise it as to, just to have it on folks' minds that if we are going to set precedent by offering something not previously offered, then I think about the fact that we are building new capacity at Jackson Davis Elementary School and Longan Elementary School, scheduled to open Fall 2026. Both of those schools will have additional capacity. And in Fall 2025, the Board will be continuing this boundary adjustment discussion to address those two schools. So I raised this setting precedent in this particular case, because I don't know that opting in or out with a grandfathering is going to be available to the public when those boundary adjustments come forward with new capacity. So that's of interest to me, learning more about that, or at least having it on the radar for discussion, both with the Board and with the public and with the team, to see the impact that that decision would make. I remain interested in, we're expecting an additional 400 seats in the next two years at our Hermitage ACE Center with the completion of the second floor being available for high school students that would attend. It would be a day-one, day-two impact, is my understanding. Is that correct, Dr. Cashwell?
That is correct. And then also, as was noted earlier, the new specialty center at Henrico High School, where the enrollment would increase over a four-year period.
So I am interested in understanding maybe some projections there across our schools as this conversation continues, because 400 ACE seats making a day-one, day-two impact with that being complete over the next two years, that's interesting. Plus, the new Center for Cyber Security at Henrico High School, that impact is interesting to me. I feel like at this time, I'm missing pieces of the puzzle. I'm still interested, the Board received a class size update. Mr. Irving spoke to it earlier during the budget presentation, where he'd like to see class sizes lowered. If we actually lowered the class sizes in our high school, I know some study halls in some schools, for example Tucker, exceed 100 students, whereas in core classes, in core classes in Deep Run, Glen Allen, Freeman, Godwin, and Tucker exceed, they're in the mid-30s, mid-to-upper 30s, and those are core instructional classes. So I'd like to see the impact of that in our high school, because I am watching the trends specifically, Deep Run, Glen Allen, Freeman, and Tucker. This came up during the comprehensive redistricting that was paused by the Board in 2020, started by the previous Board. At that time, I believe we had six, five to six middle schools feeding Tucker. And in this presentation, I appreciate the way you did highlight continuity, right, from elementary to middle to high. And I would like for the team to look at continuity for our students that attend Tucker High School, as well as programming. With three large programs in that school, I just, like I said, I feel like there are pieces to the puzzle that I'm still missing to really be able to comment any further.
And if I might add, I think you bring up some important points about programmatic impacts on our buildings and their functional capacity. And I think, you know, you were a big proponent of really looking at how programming and expanding programming can impact capacity, particularly in some conversation many years ago and the prior redistricting that you, effort that you mentioned, and particularly looking at Glen Allen High School, for example. I know you were a big champion of not just career and technical education on its merits, and we know it's wonderful, we want to expand those opportunities, but we saw how programmatic shifts, and we added a new specialty center at Verona High School. We began to see several high schools that their enrollment did shift related to the way we handled programming at the secondary level. And so that continues to be a strategy for us. It's hard to get an exact prediction on, but we can guess that based on the number of seats that will be available, for example, at the expanded ACE with the second floor at Hermitage ACE and the cyber security center, that that will have a similar effect to attract students potentially out of their home high school and continue to make impacts, as we have already seen when we do the day-one, day-two with ACE. I think that's a good example of that, as we've looked at over the prior years, and we'll continue to provide those data points.
And if you would, also, you know, programming is important, everything is important, as we're, before we do a boundary adjustment, right? The master schedule and looking at the class size report that the Board received, there are some creative things being done at different schools with the master schedule, with the space in the building. So I highlight maybe some analysis there of what's going on in some of the buildings of concern. And I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Thank you, Chair Shay.
Thank you so much. Ms. Consella, Ms. Atkins.
I concur with the amount of work that goes into presenting this level of data. Certainly is meticulous and takes time in understanding that adjusting school boundaries is a strategy for managing growth and enrollment. And it is bigger than just schools, it's looking at growth of Henrico County as a whole, and then understanding new development coming in and as things change. But I do endeavor to be very clear that I do not support adjusting Highland Springs' current student enrollment at all at this time. I do believe that it is wise to take a look at the new development around Creighton Road and looking at how and what we can do as far as having any family that chooses to move into that community to attend Henrico High School. I do support that. I also want to share that I continue to actively have conversations with families of Verona Sandston and Highland Springs around boundary adjustment. I also launched a poll so that families can tell me and assist with my decision-making and my comments in this particular space, on this particular topic, at this specific time. And so I did pull two of the questions out of the poll. It's still ongoing, so more information continues to come in, but the two that I thought may be helpful in understanding Verona Sandston and Highland Springs and the feedback that I'm getting from families so far. So from one of the questions is, do you believe school boundary adjustments should be considered as a long-term strategy for managing enrollment growth in Henrico County? Why and why not? And so I tried to summarize some of it, and so the response is, the majority of responses emphasize the importance of considering school boundaries carefully. Many respondents stated that boundaries should be adjusted with a clear, long-term strategy in mind, as they influence where families choose to live and the learning environment in schools. The other part that was highlighted extensively is around overcrowding in schools and classrooms were also highlighted as key reasons that they felt school boundary adjustments should occur, but aligned with long-term strategy, not isolated. The other question was, what factors are most important to you when considering school boundary adjustments? And participants had six options to choose from. Those options were school capacity and overcrowding, school proximity to home and transportation, academic programs and opportunities, commute times, impact on school diversity and equity, and community and neighborhood cohesion. The top two factors that were identified were school capacity and overcrowding, the one that I found extremely insightful, that I would not have selected, but that's why you ask the questions and do the polls. The second highest is community and neighborhood cohesion, and ensuring that when you combine schools, that you're paying attention to the character and the culture of the schools. So I only share those two with you. This is still in process, as I continue to get feedback from families on what are their top concerns, what are their priorities. And so it's important for me to receive the data, but sometimes there's information that you just can't get from raw data, and you have to have the conversations. And so that led to my opening statement of, at this time, in this moment... And so that led to my opening statement of, at this time, in this moment in time, where I do not support moving any Highland Springs student or family school boundaries. Absolutely willing to entertain any new development, because it gives family the choice. And also, as more information and data comes in, that could change if that's what Highland Springs, Sandton, Verona communities want to do. And so I opened the floor, because that was a lot to share in this moment. I welcome the dialogue at this time or in the future from any colleague.
Are you, is that the sum of your comments? Okay, I just didn't want to interrupt your flow.
Yeah, that was the sum of it all.
Unless colleagues to my right have some specific comments or questions, I thought I would roll to Mr. Young, since y'all have, you know.
It seemed like some open dialogue, because you referenced a poll that was taken by you, Ms. Atkins. Did that include Verona District's constituents? Because when I'm looking at the map on the proposed area, it looks like that's more Fairfield District constituents, meaning that they live in my district, but they potentially go to Highland Springs High School. So our only question is, do we know where we're hearing the feedback from, from your poll that you ran?
Yes, so you're accurate. So in the poll, they're identifying if they live in Verona, Sandton, or Highland Springs, specifically.
So in essence, this, you didn't poll anyone from this area in red?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. I didn't have any more questions from Ms. Atkins, I just wanted to know more about the poll. If I can shift into sort of speaking on the redistricting or the rezoning of this area. It was initially brought to me from families living beside the new development, that they were now building a new home, and that they found out that it was zoned for Highland Springs High School, even though it was .1 or .2 miles away. And I think that, looking at this map, it's kind of hard to digest, but it's literally, if you see the top line, I don't know if Ms. Burton can put it up, it would probably help for her. And if you see the top line, it's running literally through a neighborhood. You can see streets running in between as opposed to a hard boundary. It's almost like neighbors are not going to the same school. If you look at the top line, I'm not sure if everybody can see it, but it literally runs right through, where one side of the street goes to a school, and the other side goes to a different school, right? So I think it's important to look at those things. And I also think it's important that we look at a new community when Henrico High School is below 70% when it comes to enrollment. And I don't want to see Henrico High School, even though I'm excited about cybersecurity, I still want more of the community in the actual school than the programming coming in from all over infiltrating the school, right? We still need a solid base of community and collaboration with the children and the students that live nearby. I know programming helps, and we're excited about cybersecurity. I promise, we're super excited about it. But we want to make sure the community stays going to their schools. And that's the biggest thing that I want the community to hear, and I want my colleagues to hear as well, is that, you know, Henrico is getting squeezed. We're in the middle of the county. We're getting squeezed from the left side, we're getting squeezed from the right side, and it's slowly shrinking into the point where we don't have enough students there. And that drives culture. I know the ban enrollment is down. Henrico High School can't fill a varsity baseball team. They have eight children right now, no JV. And this is all, it's a little systemic, let's be honest, but this is all coming from basically being squeezed from every angle of the county and not having enough students to be involved in these programs, no matter what the program is. The enrollment is low. So I would encourage my colleagues to continue to, you know, talk to me, have these discussions. If we need to ride through neighborhoods, I encourage us to all go out, and let's go and let's take a drive on a weekend or during the week, and let's look at what we can do, because it's not just Henrico. I'm on the other side, I'm under-enrolled. I know a lot of you all are over-enrolled. But I think it would do all of us justice to, for lack of a better word, let's go take a trip. Let's go look and see what's going on in our schools and our neighborhoods and all of these controversial points. It's hard to see on a map, but I think it would be, it would do us justice to really go out and look at each other's communities and kind of what we're explaining and what we're trying to pull off. I don't have anything else to say, but I do have a question. It would only affect seventh graders currently if this was to be put into place. It would only affect seventh graders, if I'm hearing that correctly.
It would be your decision as to when it would be implemented, and whether there would be any considerations for the options we proposed related to grandfathering. But in this proposal, wouldn't be effective until '26, '27? So the current seventh graders, yes?
And I do support grandfathering current students, only because if our goal is to minimize disruption, I think that achieves that. If that's our goal, right? I know that's my goal, but if it's a collective goal, I think grandfathering students that are already in their high schools, because high schools have sort of a finality to it. It's the ending of schooling. And I think switching an 11th grader or a 10th grader out of the school that they plan to graduate from, I do think that's a little harsh, that's a little tough. So I do support that. Elementary school is a little different, but high school is kind of the ending, and maybe you grew up from kindergarten all the way through with these students and these childhood friends. So I don't have anything else to add, and maybe we'll have a redirect shortly, but I wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Mr. Young, can I ask you, I'm put you on the spot a little bit, so feel free to decline, and that you want to think about it more, but since you offered your opinion on the grandfathering, do you have an opinion on the opt-in if students know they're in the zone that would move if we made that decision for them to be able to start a year earlier at their school?
Yeah, you did put me on the spot.
And say you would like to think about it more, that's fine.
No, no, no. No, no, I think it's important that we have the dialogue here today. If you're going to eventually go to the school, opt-in version should be appropriate. Now, I don't know what that does to transportation, maybe they have to get themselves there. But if you're going to go there in 10th grade, I don't see why we can't opt in in ninth grade. But we have to see if that other disruptions. I just, sometimes doing one thing changes other things, so on its surface, it makes sense to me.
Okay, great. Sorry to put you on the spot. I just thought while we're dialoguing.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Mr. Irving, I'm going to come to you next, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. The level of detail, as my colleagues reiterated, is impressive and I think useful. I would also like to face, I mean, thank all of the Tucker educators who reached out and advocated for the conditions that are in their schools, which allowed us to pull the updated enrollment numbers to see that Tucker is in fact also over 100% on their day ones. And, you know, I can tell you as a teacher, on a day two of 99.4%, that feels awfully similar to 100.3%. And so I appreciate their advocacy. It allowed us to be more aware of what is happening and allowed us to amend the presentation to add the involvement of all the high schools so that we can get an accurate picture of what enrollment is in January rather than October. That's especially important in a school like Tucker, which has a very transient population, where students move in from other communities. They have a high English language learner population, which leads to a lot of students being enrolled throughout the school year. So I felt that it was incredibly important to get an accurate picture of what their current enrollment looks like and what that means as a point of functional capacity. So I really do want to thank those educators. I think that, looking at this, it is a bigger conversation than just two particular moves at this time. I think that redistricting or boundary adjustments is the toughest thing a school board does, and I think it is the most emotionally charged thing. So I think it can never be taken lightly. And I think as such, anything that can be done to reduce functional capacity that is not moving people to new buildings, unless it's through programmatic changes, which is, you know, a student and a family's choice, I think those are always the best ways to move. Some, you know, suggestions that I guess I would have for Tucker, just given their situation, is we could, you know, potentially adjust the overall capacity by, you know, maintaining or decreasing the number of specialty center slots available to all three programs. Tucker, beginning with the cohort of freshmen entering the '26, '27 school year, so current seventh graders, so not something immediate. Expand the number of internships and externships for students to provide life-ready learning experiences and alleviate the number of students in the building, particularly in first and last periods of the day. And I think central office leadership should continue to partner with Tucker School leadership to examine schedules and maximize the utilization of every space in the building, particularly collaborating, particularly collaboratively, learning experience is a hard word to pronounce. So these are non-classroom spaces. This would align Tucker's participation in the NEX Ed Workforce Partnership, which seeks to provide a transformative approach to high school education by redesigning the teaching and learning experience with innovative, team-based teaching models that provide students access to multiple educators, diverse expertise, and personalized support. Typically, these models are also use physical space in innovative ways. A team from Tucker will be traveling to Mesa, Arizona this spring, along with other HCPS high schools, to see these innovative models in action and bring back ideas for their own redesign. So my overall takeaway is that I think that this is a large conversation, and I don't think that in good conscience, I could allow students from one school to be able to opt in to switching to another school, but not as well have that opportunity offered to students at Tucker as well. And so I think at this time, I would not be able to support an opt-in for moves at other schools just purely on the grounds of, I think it would be unfair to allow it for some but not for others, when I also think that this conversation is larger and there can be options that we can learn about that are not physically moving kids to schools that they're otherwise out, that's not their choice to move through programmatic changes or other measures. So I would like us to have more options brought to the table and always consider boundary adjustments to be, you know, a last resort.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Is that all at this time? Okay, great. Rachel, I have a couple specific questions for you about kind of the development of the plans and some things that were considered along the way, and then to kind of continue our board dialogue. So Ms. Burton, could we go to the option 1, 2, 3, 4? Not options, excuse me. Yep, right there, right there. Great. All right, thank you. So I appreciate you kind of highlighting these different sections and explaining, you know, giving some context. So Sections 1 and 2 both go to Jackson Davis currently. Jackson Davis is split between Tucker and Freeman right now, with three chopped being the hard boundary. And so this is, this would essentially be taking the two sections there, Section 1 and 2, that currently go to Freeman, and moving them both to Godwin, correct? So we're not creating any additional divisions within Jackson Davis Elementary?
Not in this proposed option.
Okay. So the boundary from, before the last adjustment, so like 15 years ago, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but that boundary was Pemberton Road?
Correct.
Correct, which would be Sections 2 and 3 from that area. But that would then cause Jackson Davis to split between three high schools, right, if that was pursued?
Correct.
So was that part of the approach, including Section 2 in the recommendation?
That was part of the approach. We wanted to avoid splitting Jackson Davis three different ways. We felt like that was not going to be well-perceived, and that's going to affect our learners of those cohorts having to be split, even though they'll be going to the same middle school as that zone won't change, being split once more after entering middle school, having those cohorts already be split three ways, but also having their elementary school cohort split again. We wanted to avoid that as much as possible in these proposed options.
Thank you. I really appreciate that consideration. That matriculation, those matriculation patterns in Sections 1, 2, and 3 highlighted are just tough. They're really tough when we look at the whole elementary to middle to high school. They already are in the ways things split. So I think an additional split for Section 1 and 2 that Jackson Davis would just, would be really detrimental to their community. So I appreciate that consideration. And then Section 4 is part of Pinchback, right? Well, let me not skip over Section 3. Section 3 is Pemberton. And so the rest of Pemberton lives over kind of towards Rain Tree, and they are already at Godwin, correct?
Correct.
So this would unite that elementary school that was split up 15 years ago?
Correct.
Okay. The other elementary school I have that's currently split between Godwin and Freeman is Pinchback. And so a lot of that goes to the left, that's already at Godwin over in, like, Whittaker Woods and Kingsley. And so I noticed that you included that Section 4 there from Pinchback. Can you tell me a little bit about the reasoning to include that section?
Yes. So looking at how the boundaries are currently drawn, that Section 4, the connector roads of that neighborhood go to Godwin. However, those houses are a little, they're divided in that neighborhood because they now go to Freeman. So we wanted to look at uniting those transportation lines back together for that neighborhood, the cohesion of that neighborhood. We also wanted to utilize kind of the hard boundaries that our main and minor arterial roadways in the county already create. Gaskins Road is a minor arterial roadway for us, so we wanted to prevent as much crossing of those roads as we could for this situation.
Great. And so really, when we're looking at those homes in Section 4, particularly the ones that directly attach to Canterbury, kind of that larger idea of neighborhood communities keeping together. And then the rest of Pinchback is across from Gaskins, kind of just south of Section 3. Did you look into possibly what that would look like if, you know, that section was considered and some other sections? Kind of talk to me a little bit about that.
We did look at that. We ran several scenarios regarding this proposed recommendation. We ran it without including Jackson Davis and including the entirety of Pinchback. However, due to the number of students being produced from both Pemberton and Pinchback, that would then push Godwin over 100% functional capacity, thus kind of not achieving the objective presented for us. The Gaskins Road boundary ended up being a good splitting point for that, where we could reunify that neighborhood while not pushing Godwin over 100%, while still maintaining Freeman being back under 100%.
Thanks. I think that's a really important distinction to, you know, really speak to some of the work that you've done, that you have looked at, you know, all these different pockets. And certainly, we don't want to move so many students from Freeman that we now push Godwin over the edge, or get close to pushing over the edge that in a few years, we would have to have the opposite of this. That's too much. We don't want to disrupt in that way. But I appreciate you articulating for the community that all of those pieces have been looked at and considered as you brought this forward. So thank you for that. And I've made so many notes as we went that I'm just flipping through. I think that's all at this time for you specifically, for me. I wanted to speak a little bit to some of the considerations that came up from board members as we moved along. Ms. Consella, I really appreciate your notes about Tucker, as well as Mr. Irving, looking at Tucker programs, especially the Tucker continuity feeder patterns. I know that's something that you and I have discussed back since, what, 2019, 2020, when we were looking at that, and how that really impacts the community feel of a school. But even broader than that, there's a lot of tough matriculation patterns headed into Tucker. And so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but as we have noted, we do have new buildings and new capacity coming online soon in the next few years. And realistically, we are going to have to tackle more complex boundary adjustments and matriculations in a few years in order to tackle that. And so I concur with Ms. Consella about some of these, and Mr. Irving about some of these Tucker issues, and really urge that to be a significant consideration in the more complex adjustments, as well as Mr. Irving's recommendation beyond boundary adjustments for Tucker on how, in terms of some building usage and programagging and those sorts of things that could provide relief outside of boundary adjustments. So I think that is an important and complex discussion that we want to give the appropriate time to, right, to be responsive but not reactionary, right, and really do what's right by all of our schools, right? Like, not just Tucker, but, you know, that's an essential part of this conversation, but as we look at all of our schools, to do what's right by them and give that the time and thought that it deserves, right, to do it right. So I appreciate that. But I also believe that these recommendations that have been brought forth, both Highland Springs and Springs and Hemarco adjustments, and the Godwin and Freeman adjustments, they are limited in scope, and they are pocket adjustments. And I think that we can do this in the lens of what's to come and not creating that kind of that flip-flop we talked about earlier by moving too many people. I think as a board, we are smart enough to be able to do pocket adjustments ahead of waiting a few more years for complex consideration, to be able to, in a more isolated way, discuss these two pockets without getting them conflated with, you know, the complex adjustments that are, that may be to come with those new schools. I cannot speak directly to Hemarco and Highland Springs because I don't know your area as well as I know mine. But I know for the Godwin-Freeman, what we're looking at, all of these adjustments are south of Three Chopped, while the new capacity coming online, as well as the Tucker zones are all north of Three Chopped. And we use Three Chopped in a lot of ways as one of those hard boundaries that you were talking about. And so I feel very confident, knowing this area well, and also kind of knowing some of the challenges with the matriculations and feeders for Tucker, that we can tackle this without it getting messy with what is to come with a more complex. I confidently feel like we can tackle this pocket. And I, you know, look forward to what y'all's reflections are in your areas in terms of getting that, you know, kind of that delineation. Speaking to master schedule, I don't remember if that was Ms. Cincella or Mr. Irving, or I don't know where that came from. I think you're right. I think there's some really creative things that can be done with master schedule. I know that Dr. Marshall and Ms. O'Neal at Freeman have done a lot of those really creative things with the master schedule. And they are just flat-out out of space. They are out of master schedule tricks. These classrooms are being used almost every period. When a teacher has planning, there's another teacher. There's teachers who don't have assigned classrooms that are floaters. There's some study halls happening in gym spaces. There's some classrooms that have had approved by facilities, walls put up to divide them to make more space. They have gotten as creative as they can. I don't think there's any more rabbits to pull out of the hat with the master schedule and space usage. They are at a tipping point where they really need some relief. If you think about the heart, I won't go on and on, but a little bit. If you think about the heart of that Freeman building, it's the same as the Moody Middle School, which was Hermitage High School, and the Oak, which was Highland Springs. And it was built for a much smaller student body, right? And we were able to add on classroom spaces and annexes and separate gyms and that sort of thing there. But when we look at things like the cafeteria and the auditorium and the halls and the arteries of the school, even the functional capacity number that we're working off of of 1760 is a challenge, because those arteries, some of those main arteries in the main part of the school, were built for a population of under 1,000, you know? Much like we see some of the challenges that you saw when Highland Springs was in the Oak, and that Moody has a smaller enrollment than a high school. But keeping those things in mind, we are at a critical point at Freeman that they need relief. We're seeing it reflected in class sizes, that, which you spoke to Ms. Cincella, that it becomes this point where there's not room to even add more complement. And so because I see this as a unique opportunity to be able to utilize the space that is right next door at Godwin to provide that relief, and I would like to do it in as least disruptive way as possible. I support grandfathering. I support opt-in for, once a decision is made by the board, if we decide to move a section, for the section that has already definitively said that their neighborhood is moving. Not for anyone who wants to opt-in, but for neighborhoods that already know that they would be impacted. I do support an opt-in for those students who want to go ahead and move. It would allow us to have some relief to Freeman, perhaps starting next year, without a full implementation until the following year, as to give families more runway. I know we never got to the finish line in 2020, but that is something we kind of had talked, we had talked about a little bit, about families that knew that they were going to be impacted, to go ahead and start at a school earlier if they could provide transportation and those sorts of things. So I fully recognize that what is, you know, some of these options to be considered are more generous than a typical grandfather. But I believe with the limited scope of these pockets, and I can specifically speak to the one in my district, I'm not trying to leave you all out again, but I'm kind of deferring to your expertise over there, specifically with this pocket, with the limited scope, I think we can offer more generous grandfathering in than we can in more complex adjustments, such as a comprehensive or a seven school. This is two schools involved. It's a one-directional move. It will not create pinch points in other schools. I believe in doing what's best for kids and families with the hand that we've been dealt when we can, instead of limiting options that disrupt students on account of what might happen in the future. While I'm mindful about setting precedent, it would be a shame to disrupt families in ways that are unnecessary to cater to what may or may not be able to be done in more complex adjustments. To be clear, I think generous grandfathering in this scenario is not picking favorites. I think it's what's doing right by students and families to limit disruption, but to still be able to balance capacity. I think I hit all of my notes at this time. Any redirects that we would like to see at this time? Yes, Ms. Atkins?
So I have a few thoughts as I'm processing. One, I've learned so much more as you continue to share, and it has prompted several thoughts, one of which, based off of what you shared, we need more information. That's one. The second thought that I have is around resources. So much of our conversation has been around the student, the development, the families. But I would like for us to engage, what is this impact on staff, and what is the impact on resources, and what is the impact financially, if any? That's information that I would want to learn, especially with something like grandfathering and opt-in. What does that mean for transportation? What does that mean for the bus route that has that one student across town that needs to be picked up? So I would need more information in that space. I also will share with you that I am not a fan of opt-in. I'm amenable to learning more, and I want to share with you why. Opt-in lacks integrity when it's solely based on resources. It also can also create a much larger gap, in my opinion, with equity when we make decisions based on a moment in time in one area versus a more holistic view. I don't think that's where we want to go, and I don't want us to start. However, because there's more information that I would want to learn from regarding opting in, and I want to also understand, what does the term "expanding grandfathering" mean? My understanding is grandfathering is grandfathering. But what does extending benefits within grandfathering mean?
So I think what I meant by that, I appreciate the opportunity to provide clarity, is in previous movements, we've typically just talked about for elementary school 5th grade, which again, we're not talking about elementary and middle school here, but just for historical 5th grade, 8th grade, 11th and 12th grade. So that means there is a year of students who have started at a high school who would then have to move. Does that make sense? Do you hear what I'm saying? And so in this case, because of the limited scope of this, and the one-way moves on either of our parts, in either of our areas, to be able to expand that to, if you have started at a school, you can finish at the school, because it will not create pinch points with lots of dominos moving like it is when we've got kind of everybody moving all the directions. Does that make sense?
It does. It pushes me further to say that I'm, after that explanation, I lean more to saying no. I just want to be very transparent after that very explanation around opt-in. I just want to be specific what I'm talking about here. Because if you feel like it's okay for this moment, will you feel like it's okay for the next? And who gets to choose outside of this board? I think if you are a family and you have the time to sit and pay attention to this meeting and learn all the terms and know exactly what they mean, you are better informed to make that decision. If you are like Alicia Atkins and have many, many priorities, this happens to be one. But it's not at top of mind all the time. So if this opportunity did come to me and I was not aware of all of the other things to come into this district, I might make the decision because of this moment, because I'm unaware of all of the other things, the expansion at Hemarco and Hermitage and some of the other things. If I'm not aware of all of that information, then I don't feel that it's fair, that I would have to be, as a family, as informed as the school board to make the best decision for my family. So that's kind of where I'm sitting with this opt-in. Again, I certainly want to learn more. I think we are a board that focuses on doing the right thing, and what you're doing is advocating for an area that you were elected to represent, and that's what I respect. You're going to know your area because that's why you're there. That's speaking to your request of Freeman. But what I'm speaking to is when we start to entertain practice that's not practiced holistically and equitably, it will continue to decrease in integrity. And that's just Alicia's perspective. I also think when you set a precedence, be prepared to continue it. And I don't know that we could, given where we are today, and given the high priority of what families have to think about with changes from the federal to the state to the local, all of the things that our families are thinking about right now. What I can say is Hemarco County Public Schools is that place that has been consistent from where they send their kids. That's important to me, and making sure that we remain a safe space, a consistent space, and knowing what school your kid is going to is important. So I look forward to the additional information that Mrs. Cincella has requested. I look forward to some of the information that I have requested as well. I think this is much to process, certainly couldn't vote on it. I couldn't. Let me just speak for myself. I would not vote on that. Speaking to Mr. Young and I, we are in conversation. So now I'm just going to speak to a little bit of Fairfield and a little bit of Arina-Santon Highland Springs with your approval. So Mr. Young and I are working very well together to figure out how do we solve for what we see coming in the future, understanding some of the centers that are coming on board. So you have the cybersecurity at Hemarco. We also have the living building that will be coming on board, which is very attractive to students. So that will probably expand some of the space at Arina High School. And I do believe, and Mr. Young will chime in and keep me honest, but I believe we're going to find solutions that are going to be a good fit, based off of what families are asking for, and based off of what resources we have today and potentially what resources we may have tomorrow. And that sheer process will take some time. And so just from that perspective, I want to make sure that families know where we are today, what we're thinking today, and know that continued conversations will happen for what tomorrow may be. Mr. Young, did I do us justice, or did you want to add to that?
No, you did. You did a fantastic job. We're going to work together and figure out exactly what we can do for all of our schools in Eastern Hemarco. And speaking of Eastern Hemarco, I don't know if too many people know that Armstrong High School sits in Hemarco County. And the students that live across the street from Armstrong High School attend Hemarco County Public Schools. I don't know if the board realized that either. So it's a lot to untangle, but I think that, you know, we'll get there. But it's, like you said, program is coming on board, and I still think that it's important that we listen to the community as well. So I see some community input sessions that have been placed up, that the community will have time to share with us what they think about everything that we shared here today. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Two things. Dr. Cashwell, do we know what those input dates will be at this time, or are we still?
It's at the board discretion. So, I mean, I think at this point, we have brought you the information you all requested of us in February, and we've provided information on what boundary adjustments could look at for both of the impact areas. We provided you options and potential timelines for implementation, and we also provided you some ways you may want to seek community input. So at this point, it would really be incumbent on the board to direct us for next steps and what it is you'd like to see. I heard some requests for some specific information, so certainly could work to bring that back, but would want direction from the board on if you would want to engage in moving forward with the options we brought forward. And if so, would you want us to begin a community input process, and how would you want that to look?
Well, it certainly sounds like we need more information. And Ms. Atkins, in terms of info on kind of the opt-in scenarios, it's sounding like, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, that an important piece of information is how sustainable would this practice be, right?
Correct.
And so, and I also want to just re-anchor us in, because opt-in is not a phrase we've used before, that we've kind of talked about the philosophy of it before. And so just to, if I can briefly, to reread what's in the presentation, to define it and kind of anchor all of us in the community discussion, that the opt-in option, if we went with it, would be beginning in the year prior to implementation. So if it's implemented in '26, this would be for '25, incoming 9th graders and current students would be given the option to early opt-in, one year earlier to the new school zone, knowing that their neighborhood had already been kind of voted on to be impacted. And then HBS would provide assistance to students choosing the opt-in for scheduling courses, et cetera. So just to anchor us, it's not choosing on whether my family is impacted or not, it's choosing in, okay, knowing my neighborhood is impacted, let me just go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off and start a year earlier at the school. Anyway, so kind of the reverse of grandfathering.
Yeah, my interpretation is that, you know, your neighborhoods do impact your family.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify that for those listening. When you're engaged in this discussion, oftentimes you're already reading what the other person is trying to say. But just let me be very clear. Your neighborhood and the decision of where you live does impact your family. And I'm just speaking to that opt-in definition. So that reiterates my question around sustainability. It reiterates my comments that I made about the families that may not sit here and listen to this meeting and understand all the terms.
Excellent. So Dr. Cashwell, and I'm kind of looking at my colleagues to make sure we have consensus. Flag me if I'm wrong. We're asking for some of this information to be brought back to us.
Could I clarify the information I'm bringing back?
Yes, that would be great.
So I know one of the questions was related to the impact on staff and resources, and I think we can certainly do that. And I do want to, I can speak to some of that now, if it's helpful just for context. I mean, certainly, not all of the impacts will be quantifiable, so I want to be upfront on that. And I think that's one of the things that makes this a challenging discussion. So we know that there are going to be transportation impacts if there is implementation. And so, for example, we note, if you were to allow students currently zoned for a school to continue there, or grandfather, as the term we've used, we could do transportation a number of ways. All of these are possible, all have different potential costs or impacts. So one of them noted here would be continuing to provide transportation for those students, which would mean we'd have two bus routes running through the same neighborhood. And you mentioned that example earlier. There is a cost to that. We couldn't quantify it exactly, not knowing how many would take advantage of it. It's something that is possible, though, and we've listed it here. Another option would be, since we're talking specifically about high school, that we could leverage the hub system that's currently in place for students attending a school outside of their zone school. So that would be possible and have less impact, for example, on the budget or on our transportation system, because it's relying on something that's currently system because it's relying on something that's currently in place. So, you know, and as far as staffing goes, it also means during a time where students would be remaining or grandfathered into the school they're attending and not attending the new attendant zone, enrollment might fluctuate. So Rachel did a great job making predictions on what the capacity change would be, but again, those are guesstimates based on what we can, but the up and down 2% and 3%, we can likely handle at both sites, the current and the change site. But again, it would mean making sure we're monitoring class sizes and staffing and that there may be some adjustments. So some of these things, to your very good point, should be discussed, their impacts, but are hard to quantify. And so I just want to be upfront while we can bring you some more considerations and information related to potential impact. Some of them will be hard to quantify.
I had one question regarding the hub bus option. It is a good option, but before that would be explored, would we resolve the current issue that we have with hub bus transportation?
I think it's fair to note that a hub bus ride currently, depending on where you're going, can be a long one. In this case, since we know the impact at high schools, for example, it would be a more limited bus ride. So, you know, you would be going from the Highland Springs area to Henrico, or in this case, from the Freeman area to Godwin, versus some of the bigger challenges we have with hub buses. And I know some concerns that are very real and brought up are the longer rides when you're attending a specialty center much farther distance from your home. But it is still, you know, certainly a choice, an individual and family would have to weigh the options on what's best for them if they were to leverage this option.
All right, and then, oh, continue about any data.
Yes, so I know there was some question related to impact on staff resources, other resources such as transportation. Also, more information related to class size and digging into that. Programmatic information, which we've talked about to the degree. We know what current programming looks like with ACE and students removed day one or day two. We know the size of our current specialty centers. We know what's in the hopper and coming. So perhaps the request here, I'm not sure if you could just drill down to the...
I'd be happy to clarify with the living building. I appreciate you adding that, Ms. Atkins, because I was just so focused really on the ACE, those 400 seats over the next two years and on the new Henrico Center, which has been so top of mind.
So looking ahead at the number of seats coming onboard in the timeframe.
Well, especially with, when I'm looking at this, I need to know the additional impact or potential impact of programming.
Yes.
And as Mr. Irving said, you know, a boundary adjustment is like the last thing that we do. And then hearing generous grandfathering, whether it's an opt-in the first year potentially, and then, but it's not going to take effect until two years from now, the capacity to which we're speaking of will be complete. The ACE programming will be complete, right? As well, I mean, your living building at Wilton and will be online with the center at Henrico. So for me, I'm interested in those programmatic adjustments. And having had one of my high schools exceed where the numbers are today with looking at the ACE impact of 100%, 101% on day one and day two at Freeman, my schools come back down, though I can, I watch it just as closely as my colleagues are watching their schools, depending on growth, you know, growth in the area and so forth. So having seen what I saw in my school, I just need more information because for me, it's premature for me.
So looking at potential new programming, all the examples that have been mentioned, the number of seats each would have and the timeframes they'd be coming online. Then I also heard suggestions from Mr. Irving and concur with those, related to specifically Tucker High School and some of the challenges he's heard about from constituents and we have as well, which is really looking at, you know, they have the unique situation with three specialty centers in-house, and we know that their current zoned enrollment is up, as we can see the comparison between our fall and our January membership. And that allows us annually the opportunity to adjust those seats. So that's certainly something we can do, looking into the next incoming class and are prepared to do, to make a more immediate impact there at Tucker, as well as looking at space utilization, next generation workforce, all of those considerations that can make a near-term impact on Tucker High School. And so I heard those recommendations. And I don't know that I heard any other specific requests for information. I mentioned the class size as well. Did I get everyone's notes? Okay. So next steps for staff are, are you wanting to first have information come back before you make any other decisions related to how we would proceed? You've heard the options you requested, so direction coming from the board on next steps for staff?
Colleagues, I know that hearing from the community is an important part of this from us. Would we like to go ahead and give staff some ideas on how we would like community input so they can, you know, begin to plan those? Or is that something you want to wait on another two weeks? They gave us some options in the presentation. Ms. Burton, do you mind? Yeah, perfect. About what some options would be in person, to have some listening sessions in each area or...
And I would want to note, we sort of suggest these as a package, not some of them.
Not piecemeal package.
Correct. And I would also note that we recommend gathering community input should you choose to move forward on implementing these. So I think that's a first question I have. I heard varying comments from board members making it not clear to me and would love will from the board on whether or not pursuing the two options is something the board would want to do. And if so, then I think you need to, you know, engage in an input process that would have these major components. And certainly we would defer to the board as to how you would want those designed and what that would look like.
Okay. So should we, are y'all okay with straw polling? So that way our community, our staff and our community understand what direction we're asking for this. I would like community input. I'm hearing some whispers that it might be too soon, but I don't want to speak for any board members. I would like community input to go ahead and be planned. Other board members?
So I'll hop right in. I think it's important to get the information so that when the community comes and when they share input, we'll be more better informed. So I would prefer to receive the information before moving forward with community input.
To be clear, just, I'm not trying to play, just to be clear, do you want to get the updated information and then start to plan community engagement? Or do you want to get updated information before, like, go ahead and start to schedule community input and make sure we have information before that? Or do you want to hold off on scheduling?
No, I'll say it very clearly. I would like information before any voting or decisions to be made.
So I think my hearing that you're not ready to pursue the option that was presented without more information.
Without more information.
And the idea of an input meeting would be to present the options we just presented you and get input on those options.
I think there might be a good balance here because it's also important, which is one of the reasons why I started polling early. Having the community's input is a part of the process before getting, in my opinion, to this point. So my question is, is there a way to do both?
Well, I would certainly note, community input is always an option. For example, at written comment and in-person comment at our board meetings, and we've seen individuals already take advantage of the opportunity to comment on this topic in that way. So I know that's ongoing. This board is committed to making sure there are frequent ways to be in touch and share your feedback. And so those exist now without a structure. This structure is being recommended to accompany suggestions for specific boundary adjustments. So if you were to move forward with those, you would want to engage in a process that would likely include some of these components.
Okay, so thank you for the clarification. So I would want information before moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Atkins.
I would want a community input session. I'm perfectly fine with moving forward. Just because we have a community input session does not mean that we've all voted yes.
Agreed.
It just means we've taken the next step. We had the presentation. We understand what's being drawn out right now. I do understand the Tucker High School situation, but that is a new one that has now been broached and that one that we asked for back in, I think, November. So I would love to hear from the community at this point.
All right. Mr. Irving?
I would second what Mrs. Atkins said.
Ms. Cincella?
I agree with Mr. Irving and Ms. Atkins. For me, I've just, I've seen it. I've seen the difference that all these other things can make in capacity adjustments when we're worried about capacity. So I think it's premature, at least until the board receives information to better understand before we... This is very upsetting for communities, school community, whether it's parents, students, employees in our buildings. It's a very stressful conversation, so I'd like to better understand before moving forward.
So it sounds like majority is to hold off on scheduling official community input, but as a reminder, we're always available to hear community feedback. There's lots of ways to contact us. Anything else you need clarity on, Dr. Cashwell, regarding this and what we need?
No, I've heard all comments, questions, and we'll prepare a response.
Do you, in terms of a timeline of bringing some of this information back, are we looking possibly in two weeks or four weeks? Not to put you too much on the spot, but again, just to help our community understand what we're looking at.
Based on the current requests, should be attainable by the next meeting.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, anything further, colleagues? Thank you so much. Rachel, you've been very patient. Thank you so much.